The first thing I wanted to do is help you be aware of how we help make things happen here. We have a number of committed volunteers that have been so faithful to this place for so long. But one of the key volunteer roles is our Board of Education. And these are people that meet on a monthly basis, for sure. They meet in between with significant discussions, conversations, research. And these are people then that what I'm going to talk to you about today are conversations we've already had with them, some of which they voted on, some of which they will vote on. But this is an opportunity for us to share what our board, your board, has been working on. The next step for us that we are about to embark upon, and I've written about this Eagle review in honor of my aunt Eagle's Lady, so I hope you read that. We are going to develop the next three years, we will call enrolling strategic planning. But our strategic planning process, we are going to use the results of what have been three introspective processes we've gone through in the last two years. Some of you have participated. The first of which was two years ago, late February, the Council on Educational Standards and Accountability, keen here with three people, spent two and a half days evaluating five areas of governance in your school. Everything from finances to academic to programmatic distinction to a sense of community and the actual governance itself. And from that two and a half day process, we received back from that group, we refer to it as audit, institutional review, their commendations as to what we were doing well and their recommendations as to what it is we could improve on. So that was one. We had parents involved in that process in that on a Tuesday afternoon, we had 20 parents come in and spend time as a focus group, talking to those three people about their perceptions of school. We also had students involved in that process, we had faculty and staff involved in that process, and we had a board member dinner for those three gentlemen to further evaluate the board's role in the school. The second piece we did was, we did last spring, a complete re-accreditation of your K-12 school by Advanced Ed. Advanced Ed is the largest accrediting agency in the nation. They sent a team of three here, again, for three days, and this one was almost entirely academic. It had some other peripheral standards they were looking at, but the focus was almost entirely academic, which we felt very good about because we are a school. We're a ministry that provides a school, we are called to be a school. The third process is an organization that Mark Lovely, we're very closely with, we have called Charcoles Research. They're based out of the East Coast, and most of what they do is help Christian schools better understand their market. If you think about the market oriented as compared to the market in the school in Atlanta, as an example, it's entirely different. Atlanta, you're in the Bible building. And so the culture, the Christian culture in the South is quite different than it is in the Pacific Northwest. And the understanding of markets here as compared to there are significant. And we found out a lot about, not only about our school in Mark Research, but we found out a lot about public schools and other private schools. Here's an interesting thing that you might be able to help us with. One of the findings was that 90% plus of the people who responded to a survey had limited awareness of what private education even was about. It was almost ignorance. And the perception that they drew from that was, biggest percentage of people in this area don't even consider private school because they don't know much about it. They may just assume, hey, we just can't do it. So we've learned from that, and we've got to increase our awareness. So through those three processes, we're going to take all the recommendations and put together a steering committee of board members, faculty and staff, and parents, and over the course of the next three months, we'll develop those recommendations from the three processes into a strategic set of goals and actions set for the next three years. So when you see, or when you read about our strategic plan, you know where it came from? You're keen to compose recommendations of those three processes. You may have seen our billboards throughout the community, and our marketing team, which Mark calls a smart team, smart people, have made a decision that we're going to do our best to send a simple message to our community. So whether you see our advertisement in the South Sun Magazine or the New Tribune, which I think we're in three or four times a week, and/or the billboards, we believe people want the best education for their children. And we want to partner in that process. Now, best for us includes the spiritual, the academic, the outreach marketing, the programs the students participate, and the outreach piece. There's five components, the leadership piece. And so that best education might be a little bit different for family A than family B. But in this process, we're looking to partner with people that want the very best result. Trending, this is no surprise to you, but if you look at the picture on the right-hand side at lower school, K-5 technology is becoming more and more a part as a teaching tool to the education process. We invested in this current year an entirely new K-5 language arts program. And a good part of it is technology tool-based. So I would predict for the next couple of years, that even at the lower school, students will be walking on this campus with the device. In education, we've been buying the devices and using them in classrooms to help us test out, so let's see how it'd work. But the trending is, more and more students are walking in with some kind of device. I think in the next 24 months, a bring-your-own device will just become a part of the backpack. That's going to be a lighter backpack. Because the next 24 months, I'm also thinking there's going to be less textbooks. That's just the trend of where it is going. And we're trying to work philosophically. Education is still a teacher in front of the classroom. Technology is a tool. It's not the end-all, but it is a tool. We are trying, class by class, to monitor teacher effectiveness, the tool effectiveness, and the learning result. At the upper school level, one of the transitions, and many in this group have made that transition from, we started here in lower school, and now we're in middle school, we're in high school. One of the pieces that accelerates is the outwardness of the education. And by that, I simply mean outreach. So both of these totals represent program participation for older students. Picture on the left is a group of students that are getting ready to do food outreach in the community. So we believe taking part of a classroom day and help our students learn how to serve the community. The picture on the right happens to be a picture of the Tacoma Athletic Commission, where they honor some of our athletes for their exploits in sports. The point being, this is a school, yours is a school, where we believe in participation. Joking public school up and down the street might have a couple thousand kids, limited opportunity to participate. Opportunity to watch, but not real opportunity to participate. So for us, the upper school represents a transition to students doing things. College admissions is moving more and more towards what did students do in high school that separates themselves out from the great point average. On Monday morning, Baylor University will be here to interview some of our prospective students, one of our seniors from this year is going to Baylor to study medicine. Why is Baylor University coming to Tacoma, Washington? Not to see that one student that's already going there, they know he's going. They're looking for the very best students they can find. And the person that they're sending here knows, and he or she goes back to Baylor, whatever students he or she has found, they're going to be compared with hundreds, no thousands that are applying to Baylor University. The same is true with University of Washington. The same is true at the University of California. And so one of the things that universities are using more and more to separate out, who do we admit? Yes, they want a GPA, yes, they want high SAT scores, but they can find those. They want to find students that have established a niche search for, a passion, and they develop into participation. Because in a defining moment, interviewed with the admissions person, that admissions person is listening to find out what is it that student really gets excited about, and how can that transfer to their success at a university? It's all call attention. No university will succeed on its freshman class. They don't stay with limited numbers either. So passion, something that student really gets excited about, transfers in, why don't they stay at a university? So that's one of the key components that we believe we have to school participation. Now, let's talk a little bit about who's in the building. We take this data right off of all the admissions paperwork, your re-enrollment paper. Last night, some of the people were here, bless them, they were filling out re-enrollment paper. We take right off of that paper, this data, and I believe for a long time, I remember early conversation, maybe '95, a parent came to see me, and was concerned about, who was going to be in the school? And Jesus said, "Bring the children onto me." He did not say, "Don't bring that color, and don't bring that color, and don't bring that color." He said, "Bring the children onto me." So I had a hard-to-hard conversation with this person, explaining that we were going to be a school that would be open to its community. So if you look at the data, your school is unique in private education, not from a elitist standpoint, I'm not saying this, but I would challenge you, right? Private education, which is 55% of occasion, biggest percentage of private schools have a much higher slice of occasional ethnicity, and much smaller than the other categories. By design, we want the culture within a school to be very much like the culture that your students are going to go back into at 3 o'clock in the afternoon before they graduate here and go on to college. So ethnicity, to us, is important. Church affiliation. In the current year, 43% of our student body says they attend Life Center as their church home. There again, you take this off of the enrollment number. In addition to that, 33% in the current year say they have other churches for the affiliation. And then we have 24% that says no church affiliation. That represents, they may still be a believer, they may not be a believer. And like our sponsoring church, we are a discipleship church, we're also an evangelistic church. Sunday morning, for example, 9:00 service, prayer near the end, Pastor Dean asks, "Is anyone here that would like to live, to give their life to Jesus? Raise your hand." Two rolls in front, hand goes up. That's evangelistic people. And we take the same approach with our school. We're going to admit some non-believing students and do that in the name of spreading the gospel, the Great Commission. Now, we're not going to do that, and at the same time, risk the values from which your school is formed. But within wisdom, we believe that we are, we can beat any evangelistic school. From a highlight standpoint, there's several slides, I'm not going to touch on all of these, you have to take with you, but a couple I do want to mention. Two years ago, we created the Office of Advancement, and the Office of Advancement under Mark's leadership is in charge with basically being attentive to everything that brings a dollar into this place. Everything from tuition, admissions, retention, to how we generate fundraising money, and how is it people support what we do. So for example, at your tables, there's procurement performance for our Dreams Auction, March 10 through 12. If every family can find one item to contribute, we have a successful auction. Because God has always said, people are going to buy, but it starts with having the items. So the Office of Advancement, in just two short years, we've done more retention focus than we've done in the previous several years. And this fall, we had the highest retention rate K-12 we've had in this first year. So people aren't just starting here, they're staying with us. And so we're excited about that. Couple additional things I want to mention, the full accreditation by Advanced Ed. Accreditation is a three- to five-year process. So here we are, we received that accreditation in 2015. In 2020, we will have another cycle of accreditation. We always want to concurrent in the evaluation of what your school is doing, all the accreditation In the academic area, not on your paperwork or on the slide, but here's a bigger picture trend that's happening. The college board is an organization that helps universities communicate to K-12 education, how are we all doing? Are students graduating from high schools prepared for the rigor of a college application? For quite some time, that's been evaluated through the SAT or the ACT, depending on what state people live in. Universities use that data. For the past, I think it's been six years, the SAT has been a great part of the exam, a verbal, a math, and basically a writing component that really has an application of knowledge. The SAT is going back to the two-section test. Secondly, in the state of Washington, graduation requirements are changing. In that, the legislature is saying there needs to be more to a high school diploma. So let me give you some simple numbers. In the public arena, for a long time, 19 credits was the number required to graduate a published school high school. We were at 28 for a long time. We were seven free a day, and in that, multiply that times 40 years, you get 28 credits. So we far surpassed what the expectations were for a high school diploma. Three years ago, we made the transition to a six free a day with an advisor fee, so now we're at 24. So we've been ahead of the trend. And it's part of the reason our kids, for the most part, have significant success when they go to college. But one of the things now that we're going to make some adjustments in is how to better offer some courses, some new coursework, which I'm excited about sharing with you. For us, it starts with K-12. It isn't just a, hey, what's going to happen with high school? Because we're responsible, we feel, for what happens from kindergarten on you, and is it connected grade level to grade level, school level to school level. So in the current year, at the lower school, we are testing three times a year. Most schools test for a standardized test once a year, but we did it once a year for a long time. Two years ago, we adopted a new testing format for lower school called ECCPM. It's intervention-based testing model. So we test three times a year. And in doing so, it gives us an opportunity to evaluate where every student is and know that for a test, where are the active relationships, the fall test, mid-year test, and the sprint test. With that data, we're able then to know, does a student need an increased intervention? If they do, our faculty and staff sits down, and we have, we call RTI program, response to intervention. A student needs additional help, then that team of teachers decides what is it that that student needs. Now, that ties into middle school and to high school, because obviously we want our fifth graders leaving there prepared to do an increased academic rigor for middle school, from there to high school. So there's a connection. A couple additional things in kindergarten. The new language arts program has been an adjustment for all of us, but we like it the longer it would, just had a conversation with Suzanne last week about it. Teachers are feeling better about it, there's a learning curve with it, students are starting to get it, and we believe we're going to see really good fruit out of it in the second semester, because we made most of the adjustment to it. In addition, next Friday, we have a professional development day, and sometimes, parents need to know, what is we doing in professional development? We started a curriculum mapping process last year. So next Friday, your teachers will be spending time in small groups, mapping every core subject from kindergarten to elementary. So you take language arts, what's taught at every level, and what's the connection point, what's the overlap, or is there a gap between fourth and fifth grade? Is there a gap between seventh and eighth? Curriculum mapping is a means by which we put all into a computer and identifies where their gaps are. It also helps us in the purchasing process of curriculum. So in this current year, part of your tuition that you paid this year went to buy new language arts curriculum at the lower school level. At the middle school level, you will notice it's new science curriculum, and at the high school level, we bought all new foreign language curriculum. Next year, there'll be new sub, other subjects, new purchases, and it's all tied to mapping process. So we're not just doing it by who we think is time to buy. Instead, we use the data, we use the trending to help us make those decisions. Mentioned participation. There's a multitude of opportunities for students, and we do our very best to try to evaluate what it is we can offer from a programming standpoint, that helps students feel like this is their place. So yesterday, we were meeting with a senior class about Mexico, and I leaned over and I asked one of the seniors, who's really technology and video perfection. And he's a student that participates in some things, but I'm thinking, you know what, for his senior year, this second semester, I'd love to give him one more opportunity to get excited about what he does, what he brings to the building. So he and I were getting in a conversation today about a project, and I think he can help us with. It's a way to get that student engaged up until their graduation points is. And that's our desire for every student here, for the student who feels like this is their place, and they want to engage. Fight arts. We're all out of spring break, and we got a group of drum line kids that are going to Disney World to perform. And they are excited, "If you come to the basketball game next Monday night, you will see them perform again." And that's a group of students that, when we started drum line program, did I know where we were going, or wasn't even my idea started? A lot of what happens here is not by idea, by way. But we had this, hey, let's do a drum line. And here they are a few years later, going to Disney World as a part of it, and those kids are so excited about that opportunity to be a part of that. It's just an example of what happens when creative minds get together. The spiritual outreach piece, we are working diligently on how it is we get more and more kids engaged in their faith earlier. And with that being the step, we've taken for years this Mexico mission deal. We're in our 16th year. It's become part of the culture of your school. And we last year started a ninth grade trip to Portland, where we partnered with Bridgewater Ministries, and we like that. And we're going to continue to think those kinds of thoughts to get students engaged in helping live their faith soulstream. On your tables, there's some cards with a heart on them. Valentine's is coming, I'll give the coaching point of the benefit for sure. Okay, Valentine's is coming, guys, this is your opportunity. But we do events like this father-daughter, later in the spring, we do mother-son. Those are really all about community building. People are busy, but at the same time, one of our challenges is to get people connected. So these are the kinds of events, a couple hundred people will come together that morning and celebrate just that sense of father and a daughter and that relationship. It's our way of saying thank you, and it's our way of partnering with the father and their daughter in a relationship that we know God wants to prosper, true? So those kinds of community building events have become part of the fabric of your school. Because we think, whatever we can do to help families, helps kids, helps our school. Okay, let's talk a little bit about the money aspect of your school. You can help us, because there are uninformed parents that you may be able to help provide some of this information to. So first one, the biggest slice of our income obviously comes from tuition. However, when you look at that, 70% comes from tuition. So there's 30 cents on every dollar that comes from somewhere else besides the tuition check you write. That comes from a variety of sources. You'll notice the percentages here. For example, the advancement, I mentioned the auction. In a minute, you're going to see a slide for tuition assistance. For years, we've tried to be very intentional about all the fundraising money being very equal to the amount we put into tuition assistance. Because it's not fair that we take tuition money from a family and apply it to some other child's education. So no parent's tuition is paying tuition assistance to somebody else. So instead, our lump sum of this advancement, part of what we do is about 8% of our budget. So it's about $600,000 in this current year. So the combination of the auction, the annual fund, which we call our 12 Days 12 Ways, and our golf tournament, and some other people that simply support your school, I had lunch on Tuesday with a gentleman, and he and his wife sent us a check. Every month, 200, 200 for the dog. They've never had children in the school, but they love what we do here. And in that conversation with him, he said, "Ross, it's just a blessing to be a part of something that I know is what God would have for a younger generation." So people like that become a part of that 8% piece, but that 8% is a part of the total budget picture. Let me touch on the fee income, because this is the one that my wife never liked. She's not involved in the process, but I go home and I sit there, and when the statement comes, "Oh, come on, pay all these fees." Fees are unique to each student. Fees are not the same for other people. So tuition for all kindergarten to kindergarten ages, 6 through 8, 9 to 12, whatever the tuition rate, that's everybody pays. But fees are dependent upon choices that families make, students make, or sometimes we make, that need an additional fee to help cover the cost of. So that's where the fee income comes from, which is about 5%. Ultimately, you could say, 70% tuition plus 5% fees, you're paying, it's true, but the tuition itself is not covering all of it. Go to the next slide. So where does the money go? 55% of the total budget goes to payroll benefits, which by school standards and nonprofit standards is low. Many nonprofits are 70 to 80% of their total budget goes to people. We, by intention, do not like to pay people to stand around. So we're not administratively heavy by any means as to how we're helping make this place work, or when it works well, or when it doesn't work. So 55% goes to payroll benefits. Plan operations, how many of you, Life Center is your church home? Everybody happy? We have a separate budget, school, church, assisted living, independent living. So there's no co-mingling of monies. The only place where there's sharing of money is in plan operations. So you have an electricity bill, we have electricity. So we have figured out, for those types of bills we get, so to speak, those services we receive, custodial is another one, water, garbage, all those types of things. Grounds maintenance, we pay a percentage of that bill, the church pays a percent. And we've done it based upon days a week, how many hours of usage in a typical week. We've done several studies over the course of my 20, two years. So plan operations does cost us about 10% of our budget. So you look at all those, that's the one area where we share in the cost and the budgets. Church has its own, we have ours, and we share the attribute. I mentioned tuition assistance. Tuition assistance is almost 10% of the budget in the current year. In that process, we try to help families sustain their enrollment or begin their enrollment because we know that they need help in order to help make it happen. I chuckle when, here we are in the presidential campaign, and we got a couple of candidates who keep throwing out the idea that we're going to make college education affordable, one of which says college education should be free. Now, having spent about 45 years of education, and to think it's going to be free, don't figure something. We as the taxpayers are going to pay for free education, but you just can't do it. You can't do it. Expensive things, and if you think about that not everybody can afford education, it doesn't mean it has to be free for everyone. So the whole system, we can't, we just, I don't think. I chuckle when I see that. We do have some debt. So part of your tuition payment goes to help us pay debt. So for example, the room you're sitting in right here, I give an example, when we borrow money. I would suspect there's people that perceive this place will never have a diploma. Because it's perceived to be, I think, as a, by some, it's a wealthy person's church Because it's perceived to be, I think, as a, by some, it's a wealthy person's church. False. In 1998, we began to think about adding another addition to Fund Tame Learning Center, and you're sitting right here. With that, we raised two and a half million dollars and we borrowed two and a half million dollars. So that was an example where we borrowed some funds to help build. So part of the mortgage payment that we make is on this addition to building. Sometimes we'll borrow money from other capital projects. Sometimes if we can stay to it just right, we're going to do it entirely by cash, so we don't borrow. So our boards all work on that together to make those decisions. Here's what's due for next year. This is what I'm excited about. And for the next three years, really. We've taken core subject by core subject and looked at how we can do more in being a life. So, to touch on some of this. When we look at mathematics, we want to make sure that we capture all of our high school students with what we're going to call a ready-for-college high school math class, which is going to be a step between Algebra II and AP Calculus. Because not every student takes AP Calculus. So we want to make sure there's another level in there that is closer to the AP than it is just a generic math class. Knowing that ninety-six percent of our students are going off to college, so we want them to be prepared and equipped. In science and technology, we want to start an AP Computer Science class this fall. So we're excited about that. And with that, we're also embarking on the study of purchasing increased technology curriculum. Not just the tool itself, but the curriculum that goes with teaching, the use of technology to students. In English, we are moving this, next year, into a new curriculum with Language Arts called Springboard. Springboard is a college-ready curriculum that is integrated that helps prepare students for the same kind of writing and communications experiences they're going to have in college. And so we are purchasing sixth to eighth grade, that's Springboard curriculum, in the name of college readiness as well as high school readiness. So for us, it starts in middle school. At the social studies level, we're making a couple of adjustments in where traditional classes have been. In Washington, Washington State history has been required for a long time. We are going to move Washington State history to middle school in order to provide another teaching spot in high school for students to take additional classes, as well as to be able to help our middle school students have a better understanding of the state they live in before they enter into high school. So it's all in accordance with the ability to do that. We're also looking to add, in social studies, in the next couple of years, an AP American Government class and an AP Psychology class, which we're excited about. In foreign language, we're trending towards an AP language as well. Last night, a question came up, well, will you add additional foreign language? There's a couple determining factors in terms of how many foreign languages. Typically, a student takes one. And depending on what university they're going to go to, that university may require three years of the foreign language, some universities require four years of it. So that determines how many students might want a third foreign language. We've been teaching Spanish since day one, nineteen ninety-four. Then we added French. At the lower school level, we've been teaching Chinese. Middle school will be our next step, and it's likely to be Spanish there. In the fine arts, we're looking to add an AP Art History and an AP Music Theory. We'll have it next fall, but here's the next couple of years. Pending projects, this is something you can pray about. We have three processes and conversations we're having right now as boards and as building committee. Please don't walk out of here and say they're going to do these right now, but please walk out of here and pray with us. So here we are. One is we're prayerful about this summer being able to create within the walls here a new learning resource center for all students, which will be more than a library, it'll be a library slash media center. And then it will also be a new combined program for our life program. We've had some of our life program in the portables, and some in this building, and a couple different classrooms. We want to be more efficient with it all together. And then with that project, also build for the entire student population, a new media resource center. Two weeks ago, we set a team to go look at one school here that recently went through remodel. Next week, we're going to another place to get the best ideas, so to speak. And so with that, we're prayerful that's going to happen this summer. We'll come back in the fall, and we'd love to have that new facility ready. It'll be exciting. The second project is, we've had building committee conversations. Building committee is made up of Life Center people, Life Christian people, sometimes assisted living, depends upon what the projects will be. But one of our goals is to remove the portables, transition into church building and towards the Fund Tame Learning Center. And with that, and being able to do a complete facelift to the back playground area in the back parking lot. We are looking at architecture designs right now to see, would it be better for us, for example, to create a new pickup and drop-off point for young families? Instead of everybody coming through this loop, have a pickup and drop-off point in the back parking lot where they walk right into where they're going to go to school source, instead of parking and walking across. So it's an option. But anyway, all weathered turf field in the back and parking and everything would be complete facelift. So that's one project. The third point is, with that, my sense would be, if we're able to take the portables out this summer and do that at the back parking lot, we'll be in transition classrooms for 2016, 17. The goal then would be to raise money between now and next summer, and we can do a remodel of classrooms, including classrooms in the whole Fund Tame Learning Center, which currently are third, fourth, and fifth grade running. So we'd like to do a complete facelift in that building as well. Okay, we wanted to, so glad you came, because we've created a new program that's going to give you some money back. And I'd like to have Mark Lowley come up and explain it to you.
Well, thanks for coming out today. What's always amazing when we have parent meetings is it's usually the great parents that show up. At middle school, I used to do parenting seminars, and then it was always the best parents there that could probably teach the class. So thanks for coming today, appreciate you guys being here. Today was a great day because I got a free coffee. And so how did I get a free coffee? I had to pay for ten coffees to get it. But it's always a great day, and I walk in my coffee shop, I make a big deal about it, they get mad at me, and I take a picture of the owner, I send it to him, said, "Thanks for the coffee." So Charter Works Research, Ross talked about earlier, I headed that up last year, and they gave us quite a few recommendations. One was to get more visible in the community, not only with our school, but also with the billboards, the TNT ads, just to get our branding, our new logo out there. Another one was for us to develop a program to honor and reward our long-term families who are committed to our school. And so I went online, did a lot of research, and tried to find some schools, private schools that are doing this, and only found a couple. And one happened to be down in Palm Desert, where Ross went down to visit the head of school down there. And we came up with, after meeting with our CFO, Kerry Prosser, on the church side, being with Ross, the school board, on several occasions, we came up with a program called the Life Christian Academy Loyalty Rewards Program. And what it is, is basically to honor those families that have been with us long-term. And so if you look at the front, or your guys' front, you'll notice a couple different ways it works. One is there's a bonus award, which is for those alumni, Life Christian alumni, to get their kids back on campus. So the first time they enroll, there's a five hundred dollar bonus for them. And then for our pre-K to kindergarten, there's a big jump in tuition costs for that. And so what we want to do is try to find a way to bridge that gap a little bit, so there's also a five hundred dollar award for, a bonus award for those families. But how it works for those long-term families is, if you look down below, you'll notice rewards you get. Kind of like I got my coffee in the tenth one. You can earn your rewards all the way along, but you can redeem them in sixth grade, ninth grade, and then your senior year. So for example, it is two percent of the tuition that you pay. So if you pay full paying tuition, for example, and you're here in kindergarten all the way through sixth grade, that's six years, you're going to get two percent back on every year when you enter sixth grade. And so it's starting this year right now, so you've earned rewards for this year. But that would look about, about two hundred twenty dollars a year, times six, or a little over twelve hundred dollars towards your sixth grade tuition, so that'd be off sixth grade. And then in ninth grade, we're going to do what's called the double bonus points, which means you're going to get kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, so you're going to get nine years towards your high school experience, which is about eighteen hundred dollars if you pay full price. And then your senior year, you're going to get ninth, tenth, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade, two percent towards your senior missions trip. So usually, every student goes on the senior missions trip. The cost is about eleven hundred dollars currently right now to go, that's airfare and everything included, van rentals, all that stuff. And so if you're paying full price, and once again, about two hundred twenty dollars, say two hundred dollars roughly, that's eight hundred dollars towards your missions trip. And so if you're a senior parent that's had a senior in this room, that senior year is tough, because you've got graduation announcements, you've got cap and gown, you've got party planning, pictures. I mean, it gets pretty expensive. And so we wanted to find a way to help those families that have been here long-term have a benefit towards that. So for next year, once again, if you have a student entering into sixth grade, or ninth grade, or a senior, you're going to get two percent from this year towards those trips. So it'll take a while to add up, but over the next few years, if you've got kids in the lower school, it's going to be a huge benefit for a lot of families. And once again, it's just a way to honor and reward them. You know, they didn't give me a brand-new car when I got my tenth coffee, but I got a free one. And you know what? It was kind of nice not to have to pull up my wallet today. So once again, we're just trying to find a way to honor those families that have been with us long-term. So if you've got specific questions, come find me if you want to sit down. I've been on the phone with quite a few parents, just kind of explain the process because it is new. But once again, we want to thank you guys for being long-term loyal customers to Life Christian. Thanks.
So thank you very much. If you have additional questions, call me, email me. Thanks for your support. Love you. Enjoy the rest of your day.